So what we've got is a monitor so that the CMAP camera can see exactly what we're watching. And behind this cover page of an agenda, I have a few slides to summarize the current status, some very fresh press releases that were just sent out by David Westrick, the PIO at the county. And we're joined by Captain Taylor and Dulce. And so, all right. Mayor.
So should we get started?
Yeah, whenever you're ready.
All right.
We're ready.
Okay. So the City of San Juan Batista City Council meeting of Tuesday.
31st.
The 31st of March 2020 is now in session. So we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think we should go ahead and re-mute so that you can run the meeting, Mayor.
I'll let them know. We're going to mute you guys and then we'll put you back on after. Okay, we'll have roll call now.
Oh, then we won't mute for roll call.
No, we can't.
Okay, Trish, you ready?
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Present.
I mentioned this one, Mayor Ed.
Here.
Then we have councilmember De Vries remotely.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
And Councilmember Flores.
Here.
Thank you, we have a forum.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so now we go on to public comment and comment only on items that are on the agenda.
So we will unmute people after we get to those items that are on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
So the consent calendar is there for you. No, I'm sorry.
Not yet.
I've got an old one. Okay. So it's my turn, Mayor. I'm going to share some status and since we have Captain Taylor here and the county, they can talk directly. But just to share with you, I explained to some of the council members what a dizzy experience Friday was when the president signed the CARES Act, the $2 trillion act, and trying to figure it out. And in talking with some, including our CPA Wendy, who's joining us tonight, apparently the rules and processes changed three times between Friday afternoon and Monday afternoon. So that's part of our discussion later, but that's an idea starting at the top of what's happening, the federal response to the status of this emergency. And then this is something we have on our website. It's a document that shows both for businesses and for paycheck protection program and wrote out a nice how-to, step-by-step process, and that's available now on our website. We put that up this afternoon. On the state level, I shared a couple of things. A lot of cities right now are taking action to adopt ordinances to halt evictions. And Governor Newsom took his own executive action yesterday, I believe, no, March 27, that's the date of this notice. And now the state has taken over and Captain Taylor has shared with us that there's a penal code and no need for us to take action. So it's important for the council to know that our residents are protected from eviction while we're in a state of emergency and that the state has taken care of that and there's no action that we need to take. One thing that I shared with the council earlier today, I don't know that everyone got to see it, but one of the best sources of information that I'm getting as far as trends statewide and regionally is through these 12 o'clock daily press conferences that the governor is holding on both Twitter and on Facebook. And I say that because, for example, the seven counties to the north of us are trending differently than we are. And so it's important to understand where they're at so that we know where we might be. I'm on the phone with Santa Cruz County and with Ray in San Benito County every Friday, and Monterey County, but I'm not on the phone with those seven. So they ordered a shelter in place extension to May 3 today and redefined playgrounds and public parking lots and other things. And so as we know, when they ordered shelter in place, it was only a few days later that we ordered shelter in place. So it's likely that they're setting the trend for us. And the governor gives us an update on a regional level like that and lets us know what's going on. So I wanted to share that with folks so that they could track that. Now, one thing that's interesting and Captain Taylor, I'm going to share now, you can see on the screen, this is the March 30 COVID update. And you'll see that on the bottom line, San Benito County has 17 total cases. And in particular, there are nine cases between ages 18 and 49. And as of this afternoon, that went up. We now have 21 cases, so it went up by four. And it went up by four in that age category, 18 to 49. You know, we've had some interesting things happening in town and the captain can speak to it. People that have been tested and they don't know the results yet and they're sharing with their neighbors and so forth, especially in the RV park. I know we've had some weird things going on there, not necessarily factual. So I think maybe Eric can help speak to the current situation in our town and the community. I know we'll get to some of our local programs in a minute, but go ahead, thanks.
Sure, thanks, Don, Vice Mayor, and those of you that are here remotely. So I kind of tried to give a broad overview from where the county is with some of this stuff. Zoom meetings have become a daily occurrence multiple times, I think, for all of us.
Yeah.
It's working pretty well, actually. Communication's been okay. So the way this is working right now is currently in the county, you have one collection point, which is Hazel Hawkins Hospital. But the only way they're going to test you is if you have the symptoms. Asymptomatic people are still not being tested. And this really is a function of Health and Human Services. But this was, when we had a special meeting this morning, this was shared with the group as far as the demographics that we're seeing in the county. But I do know, and I was actually contacted again about it yesterday, that there is somewhat of a problem, miscommunication of people that either believe that they're positive or telling people that they're positive when they're not. It's really not something for the sheriff's office to weigh in on. People can say things that they want to say, whether they're accurate or not. But I think that we can work on a case-by-case basis to try to calm the fears of people if someone's saying they're positive when they're not. I will tell you, as the sheriff's office and even the city of Hollister Police Department and the Fire Department, we don't get the information of where the positive cases are. We just know what the public knows, that there are positive cases. There's a series of questions that the dispatchers are asking right now when we respond to calls to maybe let us know if we should be at a heightened safety point when we respond to those. But we don't have a list or any type of directory of where the positive cases are, just that there are positive cases. So I don't know if you have any questions about that specifically or anything else the council wants to hear from the county side of things. And I know that our OES director, Chris, is listening in right now. She was just in communication with me and I don't want to steal anybody else's thunder. But a couple of things that I think may be of interest is that we do have a countywide team that we've assembled for enforcement of this order. And we're really trying to stick with what Governor Newsom's intent was behind a lot of this. And I know at least what Dr. Marty's intent was behind this is to get people to comply with the order and not have us enforce it. And the problem with that is that there are some people that are really looking for ways around it. Have some businesses, not San Juan hasn't been a problem, Incorporated County hasn't been a problem. I think they've had 21 complaints, I think we talked about earlier today, in the city of Hollister. And we're just trying with this team to go out and educate the public and educate the business owners as to why they are nonessential and try to get compliance that way and then come around to the backend with enforcement. As of this meeting, we have not had to cite or arrest anybody for violation of the order. Don, what else did you want to know about or what else should I speak to?
I did get a press release from, well, David Westrick was introduced. And last Friday, we had another joint meeting between the county and the city of Hollister and the city of San Juan, and Leslie and the mayor were part of that. And we were introduced to David Westrick again, and he's been really ramping up. He's been sending out some great information. I have a slide in here that has the NICSIL information for the public. And I also have a slide in here, so this is the agenda from our meeting last Friday. The CIO, Ray Espinoza, talked about the $1 million that's been allocated and how he's spending that down. Piece of that went to hire David Westrick. And some of the things that are paying off is the whole NICSIL, N-I-X-E-L, IEL? Communication network has been set up. And so I have that on the screen now, the SBCCO vid to 888-777. So that's a great way to stay up to speed with NICSIL. And that's for the community to share. And then a media release that he just sent out about the National Guard to assist with community food efforts. Do you know anything about the National Guard?
Yeah, so just to clarify for anybody that may have any concern about the National Guard being called in to help. So that request was made by a local food bank, our community food bank in this county. It goes through the Office of Emergency Services. It's a humanitarian mission. It's not a law enforcement mission. We're not asking for their help. We have a great partnership with the state and with the National Guard, and they do help us often when we need it. But this is a humanitarian mission only to work in the food bank, driving forklifts, packing boxes, helping get food handed out. It's a way for the food bank to get a dedicated group of volunteers that are going to show up and work a specific day at a specific time. And it kind of takes some of the pressure off of them to try to get some volunteers together. So there's two different ways the National Guard can come into the county. And I think it's good for people to know that they don't, the National Guard doesn't just self-deploy here and take over. They need to be asked to come here. So they can either be asked to come here through the Office of Emergency Services, like they are on a humanitarian mission, or they can be requested through the law enforcement mutual aid system in the state, which goes through our office, I'm coordinating for the county, but ultimately it's the decision of the sheriff to ask him to come in. And that would be for anything enforcement-related. So if we needed crowd control, if we needed security, if we needed traffic plans, that would come through our office. I talked with Chief Reynoso. The police department is not requesting that. The sheriff's office is not requesting that. So it's not to come here to enforce laws or have any type of enforcement action. It's to come here to help pass out food. And they're doing the same thing in Monterey County and Santa Cruz County. So if you hear that they've been asked to come to our community, they were invited here, but only for that reason.
Right.
Does the council have any questions of the captain? John Freeman?
No, just thank you for your great service and I think things are going pretty well in that area.
Okay. Sessar?
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Oh. There you go.
Sessar, do you have any questions?
He's muted.
He's on mute.
I can unmute him. Okay.
Did he mute himself?
Sessar, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. I can hear you at deep.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions of Eric of Captain Taylor? No questions? Okay.
So, okay. We'll go on to Dan De Vries. Do you have any questions?
No question.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure. No, we're good.
I do want to say one thing for NICSIL is that NICSIL is a free service to anybody that opts into it. So you can opt into it, it's a free service, and then you can opt out at any time as well. But it's just a great tool. A lot of people in our community opt into NICSIL with 888-777 just by putting in your zip code, and that gets you all the alerts. It gets you, it even gets you some Monterey County alerts for weather, gets you local alerts from us. Now PIO Westrick got the county onboard, OES, with NICSIL, so you'll see alerts from them. Historically, the alerts have only come from our office and from the Hollister Police Department. But now with this line that PIO Westrick set up for COVID, you would get COVID-specific alerts. It's an opt-in free service and you can always opt out.
So is this for the whole community? Say, my neighbor, my 80-year-old neighbor down the street? Can I give her that?
Absolutely. It's an opt-in, really, it's a, you can opt in through mobile platform and text messaging and also email.
Okay.
We have another system in the community that's run out of our dispatches called Code Red. That's kind of reverse 911. That's a different system. That's if there's an imminent danger that we need to do. That would go landline telephones. That's not an opt-in. That's if you have a landline phone or you opt in from your cellular phone, the reverse 911 will call you. This is more of an advisory, community advisories and things like that. We can do shelter in place, different than the one we're in right now, but if there was some type of local emergency. And they're setting up different groups for employees to have some alerts, but it's just a free service for the end user. It's free.
Okay. The NICSIL, I signed up as a subscriber and I wanted to get an email anyway. I signed on, but now it won't allow me to get my messages. So I've got to call or, I don't know, talk to somebody about, it gives you a number to contact them and try and get your problem solved. So that's what I have to do.
Sure, I think potentially if you also go onto the, go onto NICSIL through desktop computer or iPad or something, it might be a little easier than having to get it from your phone.
Yeah.
And I know PIO Westrick is a, personally, and I think there are some, you can go on their website and get some frequently asked questions on how to get something.
Right, yeah.
You do have to, you do make a choice, and when you opt in, and we make a choice when we push messages out, how we want it to go out, you can do just text, just email, or more.
Okay.
Captain Taylor, there was a board meeting this morning, a rather brief conversation. Anything newsworthy from that? I wasn't able to watch. Board of Supervisors today?
No, we got an update from Tracy Belton, again, from HHSA, which was informative. We got a nice update from Enrique Ariana about our homeless population and the concerns therein. I don't have the numbers, but he gave, they've done a rental assistance program in our community for those that qualify. They placed some homeless individuals into housing and they gave an update. I think the male beds in the shelter are full or they have been full, and they had some empty bunks for females, probably a handful. But the shelter is being used, it's being used often. So he gave an update. And then Chris Magano gave an update. We had a shipment of PPEs come in that have been distributed out to the people that asked for them. So she kind of gave an update. There's some concern that we don't have enough PPEs and safety equipment for first responders in the hospital. I think locally, right now, we're doing fine. We actually, she has another very large order coming in at the end of this week. There are certain things we can't get. So I think she spoke to thermometers. You just can't get them right now. There are some other items, I think, that she requested that they just, they're backordered and they're difficult to get. But our office is well-stocked. I think the police department had an ask for some things that they're getting. We've been working well with Hazel Hawkins. So I think that as we sit right now, we're doing well, but we're still trying to get more anticipated surge. And you probably have also heard too that, you know, there's some new testing that's coming available, some rapid testing. I'm not sure how that's going to filter down to our community. But right now, the people that are being tested, it's about a seven-day turnaround to get results.
Yeah.
So that creates a little bit of delay. However, the vast majority of results that have come in have been negative.
Right.
Well, that's good.
Right.
The new cases that we have, are they in the hospital or are they staying home? How do we keep track of those people?
So that's all a function of public health, not of our office. And like, it's very, very sensitive and protective information. So they haven't told us where people are going. I can't, I don't even have the information on how many ventilators are being used in the hospital, if any, who's in the hospital that's COVID, who's being, who's at home. I do know there's been some talk that the majority of our cases are mild. And then, so if you go to, there's a link as well to be able to go to the county dashboard for the, for our COVID cases. It'll tell you how many active cases we have.
Yeah.
I think it's on there.
It's on the bottom of this sheet too, I think.
Yeah, it's like SBC COVID-19.
Right.
US or something like that.
Right.
And then that kind of takes you to this, what they're hoping is going to be maybe a daily newsletter that's going to come out or this daily format. But also, there's a dashboard that was put together by our GIS staff in the county, which is fantastic. And it's a running, live dashboard of how many cases are active, how many have recovered. And still, to date, we have one reported COVID-related death. That was back from the 16th of March. Again, we don't have results on whether or not it was caused by COVID or if it was somebody that passed from underlying conditions but was also COVID-positive. We don't know.
So we don't really know if he had COVID?
We do know that that male tested positive for COVID-19, yes. They just can't say at this point because Santa Clara County is inundated with cases and that's who we contract with. So we don't know, as we stand here today, whether or not the cause of death was COVID or if the cause of death was something else but a contributing factor to COVID-19.
So then, when a coroner does accept a body, they do the testing and all the analysis in Santa Clara County?
Yes.
It's not done here?
No.
Okay.
So if we have any decedents, and so the more likely scenario is that anybody that's displaying these symptoms is probably going to be under a doctor's care. So in those cases, if someone passes and they are under a doctor's care, that's not the jurisdiction of the county coroner. That's what we would call a medical sign-off and they would go straight to the funeral.
Oh.
We would still report it, but we wouldn't take jurisdiction, there wouldn't be an autopsy. The one that we had on the 16th, that individual was not under a doctor's care, was not expected for them to pass. So it became a coroner case and they went to Santa Clara for autopsy.
Yeah.
It was there that they were tested and we got the positive result. We've since had a couple coroner cases since then that, one, we don't have testing back yet, the other one was negative. And then we had a case today locally where we had somebody pass and it ended up not being a jurisdiction of the coroner and not being related to COVID. It was natural.
Okay.
So it's, a lot of people are, a lot of our first responders are pretty nervous right now about, you know, everything that's going on. Right before I came here tonight, Santa Rosa Police Department just put out in the media that they lost a detective.
Oh, no.
To COVID-19 today, earlier today. I don't know the results of that, but that, again, creates, you know, a little anxiety in the ranks of our first responders.
Yeah, absolutely.
The thing talking from that is if you do see our local firefighters, AMR, deputy sheriffs, police officers, if you see them putting on extra PPEs, it's just out of an abundance of caution.
Oh, yeah.
Not to instill fear.
Absolutely.
And it doesn't mean that they're going to do a COVID situation. It just, they're just being extra careful.
Oh, yeah.
Which we told enough of KTV.
So they should be, absolutely.
Okay. You want to go back, members of the council, see if they have any other thoughts?
Sure. Let's see.
Everybody's on, so.
Is everybody's on?
Yeah. Does anyone have any thoughts to add or questions? Okay, moving forward.
Yeah, Don and I, I was noticing that in the shelter in place revised order that the other six counties gave out today, they eliminated construction as an essential job. And so I'm wondering if we're going to do the same. There is an exception on construction work for healthcare facilities, but other than that, residential and commercial construction is now in the six counties to the north of us, on suspended.
So.
If we're going to get to there?
Yeah, great question. That's right on the second page of our agenda. So I was going to talk about the city's response and status report, and I have that same report in front of me. It was, just came out this afternoon. The new order adds some clarifying language around essential businesses and activities. Use of playgrounds, dog parks, oh, don't have to worry about that. Public picnic areas, similar recreational areas, all prohibited. These areas must be closed to public use. The use of shared public recreational facilities such as golf courses, tennis, basketball courts, pools, rock walls, these facilities must be closed. Sports requiring people to share a ball or other equipment. So riding your bike is obviously okay. That's the new traffic in front of my window now instead of fourth graders, it's kids on bikes.
Yep.
Pretty cool. Requires essential businesses to develop a social distancing protocol before April 3rd. You notice the blue tape in the windmill and CVS and others. Requires essential businesses to develop, okay, most construction, residential and commercial, is prohibited. So that's what councilmember Freeman's talking about. That would be really, that's like one of the only businesses in town that are functioning. We've had calls about the installation of the Ponzinis and.
Right.
And I was in Rancho Vista today inspecting public improvements and they're hard at work out there. So that would be a new challenge. And fortunately, we have Rich Brown out there helping us with compliance. I'm just listing these things for you because, as John suggests, what the other six counties did, we ended up doing. But remember, the health official is the boss in this case. So if the health official, doctor comes down and says, we need to follow the same protocol, guess what? We're following this protocol. So service providers that enable residential transactions, notary, title companies, realtors, funeral homes and cemeteries, moving companies, rental car companies, rideshare services that enable essential activities. Essential businesses that continue to operate facilities must scale down operations to their essential components only.
You said funeral homes?
Yeah. Expanded to include service providers that enable residential transactions, funeral homes and cemeteries, moving companies, rental car companies. So it expands them to include them.
Congregation of people.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, we're looking at, for example, in this last bullet of having a maintenance crew cut in half, working an AM shift and an after-lunch shift, that also helps protect us and them so that not all of them get sick at once. So we at least have a crew and a rotation going on. So we've heard about this A and B, or partnering. So just two work together all the time and they don't work, all eight doing the same project. So that's our little bit that we do here in San Juan. But this is all Dr. Grant Coffers of San Francisco Department of Public Health. You know, it's, he's reinforcing the governor's message, getting ready for the surge if it's not already here in San Francisco and to do everything we can to minimize the harm and the virus does to our communities. So that's what's happening to the north of us. We expanded our protections to include parks on Friday and closed our restrooms. And that's not always the easiest thing to do, homeless and travelers that come through town. There's still velero, there's still, you know, there's still some access. We also have created some new programs. You know, Rich Brown's been really busy. This is just an example of our restrooms closed sign and our playgrounds. And then this is, I don't expect you guys to read this, but this is the information that Rich Brown is sharing with the community regarding the yellow and red cards. So we're doing just a window survey of our community to make sure that folks are safe and sound and it's a way of communicating without being in contact with each other. He's developed some great teamwork out at the RV park, for example, working with Commissioner Shirley Brewer and other leaders out there to help them work with that community. We've got a couple other volunteers working with him just because, for the love of the community. So it's been a good program. It's been popularly received. I appreciate the council's support of the program, and that's why we came up with this in writing in both Spanish and English, because we were getting complaints and concerns. And so, you know, we're building the airplane as we fly, so bear with us, just like this Zoom meeting. And with that, that's where we're at. You know, we've tried to reinforce and we've shared information from the California State Water Control Board about the safety of the water, the fact that we're treating it for other bacterias, is more than adequate to treat it for this virus. So the water does remain safe and potable. So it's not going to hurt you to drink the water. We need to be aware of that and that our crews are safe working on the wastewater treatment side and that our licensed operators continue to run both our freshwater and our wastewater services. So we're in good shape and we have some redundancy there because they're pretty large firms and we have some backup going on. So that's. So that's stable. No issues there. The state of emergency was declared March 17th in our city. It's valid for 60 days, so we're only a couple weeks into it, so we'll see how we do. And I think that's it for that item. So that's just kind of an overview of federal, state, and local.
I just had one more question for Captain Taylor. I was curious about the homeless. Do we still have homeless out in the street or are most of them in some sort of a housing?
So the governor's order initially and what the public health orders have followed to mirror that, the homeless population is exempt from this order. So there's a couple nuances with homelessness in California. It's been decriminalized and anything associated with someone's state of homelessness has been decriminalized. So gone are the days of citing someone for camping if they don't have a place to live. So some of those were deemed as harassing to the homeless community. So those are kind of off the books for us right now. So as far as moving people along and forcibly housing them, that's not part of this order. That's not happening. So we're doing the best we can with a lot of outreach from our local homeless shelter and from Health and Human Services and with our partners, a lot of our local advocates for the homeless. So we're doing the best we can, but overall, they're an exempt party from this health order.
Wow.
And I don't know what Dr. Marty is going to decide to do, but I do know, like Don was saying, that we did try to have some consistency for the Northern California counties here. But I would assume we're coming up on the expiration of our current order, I think on the 6th of April or something like that. So I would expect to hear something from Dr. Marty soon as to what direction we're going to go. One thing I did leave out, and I think it might be of interest to residents here because of the proximity, is that I talked to the superintendent of the state parks for our local state parks here.
Right.
And I believe I'm correct that Hollister Hills is a hard closure.
Right.
So Hollister Hills is closed down completely. And Fremont Peak and the state park here are what they call a soft closure.
Okay.
I don't know exactly what that means for Fremont Peak because I think the gates are closed, but I don't know if they still allow hiking. I heard today the gates were closed up there, but I was also told before it was only a soft closure for camping.
That was the original order, but that was two weeks ago when I last talked with the superintendent.
So Park Hill is a hard close. That means no one is allowed to go on that park?
Hollister Hills is a, Hollister Hills, the motorcycle park.
Okay.
The off-road, off-highway vehicle park is a hard closure. That state park there on Siena Road is a hard closure.
Okay.
They were still allowing hiking at the Mudstone Ranch, motorcycle riding in day use, but I think a couple days ago, I think I checked with him the day before yesterday.
Okay.
And it was like at 7:30 in the evening that they came down. That's when the governor closed the 280 state parks.
Right.
And that made Fremont, that made Hollister Hills a hard closure and what the superintendent told me is that Fremont Peak and the state park here by the Mission were a soft closure. I don't know what that means. I just know that clearly there's some difference there.
Right, right. Well, I'm just from reference, the parks along 68, the restrooms are closed, the playgrounds are closed, but people are still hiking and biking at Toro Park, for example. They closed the parking lot and the restrooms, BLM at Fort Ord, but people are still parking all over the shoulders and hiking in the mountains anyway.
And I think also for a period of time during the original order, the federal government, the federal land was exempt. So our BLM land in the county and Pinnacle's National Park were exempt, but now Pinnacle's National Park, you can only go there if you had a prior reservation to go there. Other than that, I don't think they're letting anybody in the National Park.
I thought it was closed, okay.
So what happened is it kind of backfired a little bit. They asked everybody to go out and get some recreation and then everybody went to the same place.
Absolutely.
So it's a bit of a pullback on that right now.
Yeah.
So I don't know what that does. I think, in my understanding, the soft closure would be no camping at Fremont Peak, but you might still be able to go up there and hike as long as you keep your social distancing. But I would check the state park's website before you go up there.
But there would be no flag celebration, I presume, right?
Probably not.
That's in April, the second week in April?
I can't remember the date. Yeah. Yeah. So, okay. Do you have any other questions? Questions for Captain Taylor?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That was great.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Have a good night.
Thanks you too. Stay well, stay safe.
You too, thank you.
Moving on to item 3E, the city's fiscal impact. I provided a, just a, this is the back-of-the-napkin kind of spreadsheet for the city council describing our general fund primarily and what it means to lose sales tax and to lose transit occupancy tax. And you'll see there's a number there. If you go under the column with fourth, that's the quarter we're in, we're heading towards, at a potential loss to the city of $308,000. And Wendy Cummings, our CPA, is online with us and I should probably unmute this so she can talk. There's Wendy. Hi Wendy.
Hi there.
It's your chance to chime in finally, thank you. I'm just going over this spreadsheet real quick. You and I worked on together. And, you know, we had this conversation about property tax. It was $113,000 of the 308. And whether or not the property tax has been postponed because we don't pay it in April, we got a bump, but there wasn't really a date certain. And Wendy said, you know, when people don't pay their property tax, it can take five years to recover it. So we've been going back and forth on whether or not people will pay and Wendy has some pretty good insight on property tax. It's somewhere, let's just say, I've got a bottom line here of net, about $190,000 a quarter. So the sales tax is a good percentage of our general fund. Wendy, do you want to describe your thoughts on this for us?
Well, I mean, my thoughts right now is as we move into this fourth quarter, we're kind of, we're working with the crystal ball. I mean, there's so much uncertainty around there in cash flow. We're in the process of building next year's fiscal budget, which will be greatly impacted by the current situation. So, you know, as far as what Don and I tried to work around was what are the major revenue categories that would be impacted by our current situation? And that would be sales, property, transient, occupancy, business licenses. And then I also wanted to chime in around enterprise funds, utility billing revenue, you know, the different various aspects. Like, we can bill for utility revenue usage, doesn't mean we get cash flow. That doesn't mean that we won't get that money back in short order. It may be that we may see months before we get that cash flow, depending on people's individual circumstances. So presently, I think that the intent with this report is to display what the potential revenue impact will be through the fiscal year or the quarter and then try to reject out until next fiscal year. So there's still, you know, numbers in the making here. And we're not alone. I mean, every city is grappling with what will the impact look like. Our property taxes, we generally see for the April 10th payments, that revenue come in somewhere around end of May and that could probably be a pretty good indicator of what the cash flow is going to look like going into next fiscal year.
Thank you, thank you. So when we presented the audit in December and then the mid-year budget in January, we talked about our general fund reserve and thank goodness, we were, I was left, the city was left with a good general fund reserve because we're holding on to it, trying to maintain. Can you talk about our general fund reserve and our reserve accounts, Wendy?
Yeah, so our general fund reserve accounts still maintain their present value as at June 30th, 2019. But we do need to be mindful of our debt service and, you know, separating our enterprise funds out from that reserve. And in part of this meeting, I took a look to see where we stand and I do believe it's pretty consistent with where we were at, at the end of last fiscal year. So we do have funds available to support our operations for the near future, meaning at least through the end of the calendar year, not the fiscal year.
So that's good to know. And it was about a year ago, we changed our investment policy, right? We put a lot of our reserves into the local agency investment fund.
That's correct. We moved our monies over there to have a greater return on investment, but the city still maintains an operating reserve on the general fund of 2.5, 2.5 months of operating reserves, but with the funds that we have presently, that more than covers that for several months.
And have you been watching the life rates at all? Are they subject to the same bad news that we heard early in this tragedy? Are our investments holding their own because they're in this conservative investment portfolio?
Yeah, your life rates are not impacted greatly as the market's been swinging up and down. We're in very secured investments and I'm comfortable that we should continue to keep our funds in life.
So that was lucky, that was smart.
That's good. Yeah, that was very smart.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you Wendy.
You're welcome.
Very helpful.
So we really need to thank former city manager Ed Twees for that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
He's the one that really helped us out there and gaining the interest of, you know, free money to the city, basically. And before, we were getting nothing.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a practice that I've seen in every city I've worked for and a smart thing to do. What I'm sharing with you now in the Zoom meeting is the overview of FEMA eligibility fact sheet and you'll see the local governments are second on that eligibility list and the types of things that FEMA will reimburse us for. We already started tracking, we've already started tracking Rich Brown's time and Rochelle's time. She's done a fabulous job keeping our community up to date with the internet and social media. So emergency operations, training, disinfection, PP&amp;E is all reimbursable. Emergency medical care, that's not in our wheelhouse. Medical sheltering, that's not currently an issue, but Cesare and others and I have had conversations about what if we need to use a community hall, what does it take to get it ready? So those expenses would all be reimbursable. Household pet sheltering and containment actions. Purchase and distribution of food, water, ice, medicine, and other consumable supplies for our community. Security and law enforcement, so again, speaking to some of our additional costs there. I did reach out to fire and fire thought that we might incur additional costs, so I'm not sure what that's going to look like. Actually, Captain Del Campo said anything is possible. So we'll see what that looks like. Search and rescue is not for us. Reimbursement for state, tribe, our local government force account and overtime costs, we haven't gotten to that point yet, so we're pretty good there. But I guess that my whole point in sharing this with you is the idea that we are with our state of emergency and our fund accounting is set up to track all of our costs related to this event right now and moving forward. And that's critical because six months from now, we want to have it documented, we want to have it in the file. So I just wanted to let you know that that's also a possibility.
And we started tracking that when we declared a state of emergency.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Perfect.
So, okay, so that was F. That was 3F, if you didn't know it. Any thoughts or suggestions from the council on planning the city's recovery and potential resources?
The three, there was the Hayward.
Yes, that's 4B.
Is that, okay.
That's 4B. So that's another way that we're talking about potential resources. So I just wanted to give this FEMA overview in this section and then we can get into more detail.
So now we go on to action items?
4A, yes.
So A, action items under A, consider resolution 2020-XX suspending the portion of section 3-5-100 pertaining to delinquent water and sewer charges and associated late fees and all sections of 3-5-105, 3-5-110, and 3-5-115 pertaining to water surface termination disconnections due to non-payment, late notices, and connection fees during the state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually somewhat of a cleanup item. Deb Mall, our city attorney, pointed out to me in particular that the CPUC issued an order earlier in March and many cities took action in response to that order because it does talk about eliminating or not terminating water services and eliminating late fees under this status of emergency. I didn't realize that we needed to then demonstrate to the CPUC that we adopted, that we took action, that we adopted a resolution to demonstrate that we've done that. So what this does is follow up in a conference call with 15 city managers Friday afternoon, Gonzalez, Greenfield, Soladad, right down the line, Hollister, they've all done this. So we're just, we're catching up. And our community was quick to point it out and so I apologize, we put out our yellow tags in March and that was probably a mistake and we won't put them out in April, assuming status quo for the next few weeks. And there would not be any late fees applicable in March because this goes into effect back to March 17th when our declaration occurred, actually when the health official talked about it. So with that, Mayor, the resolution is attached, just as you read, and we would be seeking action.
So now we go and vote on this, right?
Yeah.
So I need somebody to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to consider resolution 2020...
11.
11. And all it entails.
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, John Freeman, second it. Thank you. And all those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I didn't hear everybody.
Let's see, maybe I messed up.
Do that again.
And you know, I wanted to hear from Deb. Deb's not muted though. Deb, we didn't hear, should we take public comment, Deb, right?
Yes, if there's public there or if somebody has submitted a comment to the city clerk.
No, I do not have any comments to my email.
Okay.
Is there anybody listening that might want to have a comment? They would be able to comment, Wendy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this open comment?
Yes.
Okay. Is there an update from the superintendent for Aroma San Juan School District regarding school closures?
We're on a different subject.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're talking about water right now. When you ask about open comment, it's not comment about that, it's about water. And I can help you with a link. The notice is the board has to vote every time they extend the closure of the school and so the community has been a little bit concerned and confused about that.
So let's go on to the, finishing up our, any comments on the resolution that we're voting on? That's what we meant. I guess there aren't any. Okay, so now we're going to vote again because I don't think everybody heard. Okay.
So I think we do a roll call vote?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that would be better.
Sorry. All right, so...
Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote? So go ahead.
I'm going to start with the people that are not present. Councilmember Flores.
Can you hear him? Is he muted?
Yeah, Cesare's muted.
From his side?
Yeah, I cannot mute him. Oh, let's see.
There he is, there he is.
Oh, there he is. Unmuted.
He needs to do a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
I can unmute him. Cesare, you're on a hard mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're voting on the resolution. Okay. So we're voting on the resolution to suspend.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeVries?
Dan?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
Thank you.
The vote passes.
Okay.
So now we go on to B, consider adopting Resolution 2020-XX establishing an emergency fund using general fund reserves that provides immediate assistance to small local restaurants and businesses for the purchase of personal protective equipment for staff and community and contributes to the county's emergency response fund.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. I was going to refer to Mary and Leslie, at least initially, because we were talking about what other cities were doing. And this was Friday afternoon, and I had this example from Hayward of putting together a program of grants, $5,000 available for Hayward Small Businesses, of something of the many things that I've come across in the emails that I've received. And what else could we do? When we listened to the county talk about the million dollar fund that they set aside, they reached out to San Juan Batista and Hollister for contributions to that emergency fund. So that's, I simply did the math, a million dollars divided by 60,000 was $16 per capita. So times 2,000 is about $33,000 if we wanted to match what the county had done. Maybe not. See if they use it all first. That's up to the council to decide. I just did some math so that there was some logical approach. And then they also set money aside to buy personal protective equipment. So in the event that our seniors or other community members needed personal protective equipment or whether or not we needed that in our public works department as we maintain our essential systems, I put a little bit of money aside for that, assuming we can find it and buy it. But that would be just for San Juan Batista if we have to hunker down, if the shelter in place order gets stricter or what have you. It's just something to have reserves. If we can find masks, if we can find gloves, if we can find personal protective equipment. So I threw a budget together based on the mid-year budget staff report. And in that budget, we talked about having a potential of $190,000 to contribute to our reserves. Now Wendy and I shared a slide with you earlier tonight that shows that money might not be there June 30th. So that makes this a hard question. The interesting and challenging part for me and for the city council is trying to interpret, I'm going to move the slide down now, the CARE Act, CARES Act, because it has programs, it has grants for small businesses. And I've been working with the San Juan Committee with Heidi and Jill Pagan, and we've been talking about if we were to provide assistance for businesses, what would that look like in our historic district, vital to our tourism, our hospitality industries, food and beverage, and how would that be, how would that criteria be established? So that's still a work in progress. But as noted here in this email from the San Benito County Economic Development Corporation, and we had a business owner do this today, went in a second time, had a much easier time completing the SBA grant application and was, loan application, and was led immediately to the $10,000 grants that the federal government has made available within three days.
Oh, my.
So she applied for the loan, and this is something, it's the EIDL application, that's the name of the grant, for disadvantaged, pardon me, I have the name of it here. The CARES Act creates a new SBA economic injury emergency grant program, and these grants provide an emergency advance of up to $10,000. So Wendy has been attending some training, probably on behalf of some of her nonprofit clients and others, and she can give us a little more insight into this program. But basically, at the end, it says, after you apply for the grant, for the loan, then you can request the advance, and the advance does not need to be repaid under any circumstance and may be used to keep employees on payroll, pay for sick leave, meet increased production costs due to supply chain disruption, pay business obligations, including debt, rent, and mortgage. And so Wendy, could you share your thoughts on this program and what do you think we can afford to do? And just, I'd love to have your thoughts on this matter.
Yeah, you know, as we spoke about this this morning, we discussed around the idea of providing grants to the small businesses of San Juan Batista. But with this new package, this stimulus package, there are opportunities for the small businesses, meaning those that have less than 500 employees, online. And literally, the online application process was, it looks to be built and now up and running over the weekend. So Monday, it went live where we can go online. And it's pretty simple. It takes about 10 minutes for small businesses to go in and put in their type of entity, their date of inception, their annual gross revenues for the fiscal period February 1, 2019 through January 31, 2020, as well as their expenses, and a few other questions about, you know, are you an illegal entity doing bad things, or are you good people doing good things? And after those questions are answered, they certify the information submitted, and then supposedly within three business days, those funds can be directly deposited, $10,000, to your bank account. Those $10,000 in funds would be subsequently forgiven as a grant. But in addition to that, they look at your financial information, consider your needs, and then will give you a loan proposal at a very low interest rate with about a 10-year term. Again, this is new starting yesterday. But I'm encouraging your small businesses to jump into this because it's a first come, first served with limited funds to serve about a million businesses nationwide. The second opportunity for your small businesses has to do with this payroll, they call it PPP, Payroll Reserve, I forget the acronym for it. But what that does, it allows you to work through the SBA, through a lending institution. If you have employees, the objective is to keep those employees employed, to keep their wages coming in. And what they will provide to you is, in summary, is a look back, 2019 gross wages, what was your average monthly gross wages? Take that times by 2.5. A very, very simple form. I've already, I've looked at it. It's a super simple form. You do this math, and then you identify where you're going to use these funds for. It could be for payroll for certain, including benefits, utilities, mortgage, the paycheck, that's a paycheck protection program. Thank you. And then after receiving the funds, within eight weeks, you need to go back to the lending institution and substantiate the use of those funds. With that said, should you substantiate them according to their guidelines, you will be forgiven repayment of those funds. If you don't substantiate, well, then it will roll into a long-term note for 10 years at 4%.
What was the percent? 4?
4.
4%.
Wendy, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
One of our local businesses applied just the other day. It was really hard for her to get through. She finally got through, and she finally applied for a small business loan. Now, if she already applied for a small business loan, and then you've got, or there is this program now, can she do both?
I don't know that that would disqualify her. If I was in her position, I would get on the SBA website, and it, what I saw between yesterday and today is a very simple-
Brand new stuff.
-to apply, and I would encourage her to reach out all avenues.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, revisit. So I don't know if the council wants to take any action on this.
I don't know.
Things are changing so quickly.
I know they're changing so fast. I think that we should, I don't know, I think we need to rethink it.
Why don't we reach out to our council and see if there's members of the public that want to speak on it?
Okay. Cesar, can you hear me?
No. He's muted again.
Councilman Cesar?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. So what are your thoughts on this?
Well, listening to all the changes and everything, maybe we should wait on this. I don't know. But I go along with the majority.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Cesar. John Freeman, how do you feel about this?
I actually think we probably shouldn't wait because people are going to be needing money very shortly. And I think it would be better that we have a fund available for our small businesses in town. If we lose more than a few of them, we'll be in a world of hurt. So I think it would be in our interest to have the availability to get businesses that are established in our town to be able to have them access some funds, either loans or grants.
Thank you. Mr. DeVries, how do you feel about this?
I'm not sure. John, what did you say? You're in favor of waiting, or you want to go forward? I couldn't hear you at the beginning.
No, I'm in favor of going forward, pretty much. I think if we wait too long, we might lose a few businesses. That's my fear. If we wait, because we only meet once a month, so it takes us longer to do things in other jurisdictions. And if we wait too long, we'll lose some businesses.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a concern. I guess the only thoughts I would have are these, that if we're going to consider these, I guess you'd call them city grants, what would the criteria be? Would there be an application process? What would the selection of the recipients consist of? Those kinds of things, just as a practical matter. Don, do you have any thoughts on those questions?
A grant versus a loan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, but go ahead, Wendy.
I just want to add before Don goes, and I don't know, Leslie, did you have anything that you wanted to say?
That was my question, just grant versus loan, sort of.
My thought was that we didn't, I didn't realize that we would be giving the small businesses a large amount of money. I thought it was going to be just, you know, a little bit to get them by. So I had misunderstood what we were talking about.
We could, I'll bet you we meet again before April 17th, and that would give the San Juan Committee and myself and the, or even an ad hoc committee of the city council just to work with us on some criteria. To answer your question, Councilmember DeVries, you know, the Hayward program was absent, any criteria. And I actually came to work Monday morning going, oh, my gosh, we need to rein this in a little bit. So I was actually a little bit nervous about it.
5,000 was a lot.
And the math I was doing was less. It was about 2,000, 2,200.
Right.
Yeah.
Depending on how many responses we get. And I think we have members of the San Juan Committee on board with us right now, and I don't know if Heidi or others want to talk when we're done.
I guess one of my questions would be, if we gave this out and we potentially, the city needed 190,000 to survive, or, yeah, anything, where the small businesses can actually apply for this loan right now?
Right.
And perhaps if we have another emergency meeting in a week and we revisit this.
May I chime in?
Yes.
This is Wendy. Perhaps consider encouraging these small businesses in short order to get online, apply, and per the feds, within three days, they could have $10,000 in their bank account.
Yeah.
And we are, and we are, Wendy, yeah.
Has this gone up on this?
This program?
Has it gone up on San Benito, I mean, San Juan?
Yes.
All of our websites?
Anything business-related has been shared directly with the committee and has been sent out to the members in their mail email.
But is it on our website?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's also, more importantly, it's on the San Benito County Economic Development website. So Kathy and Mark Fontes are managing this program for us and helping businesses both in Hollister and in San Juan. But we have, you can bet, we have boots on the ground. We have, we have both Jill and Heidi working with businesses to help them with the application process. It occurred to me, maybe we needed part-time staff, but it sounds like the application process is fairly simple.
It's very simple, and your business community simply go to the SBA website and click on the big sign with the coronavirus on it, and it will take them to a portal that shows all their opportunities there.
Okay, that sounds like I could even do it.
Even me. I quote the mayor on that one. Even I could do it.
Okay. Usually, I see lots of stuff that goes up on Facebook really quickly, and I hadn't seen this yet.
I made the request. I'm not sure if we're sure.
Perfect.
Yeah.
We'll get Fran on that, too.
So I don't know, are we going to vote on this to wait?
We want to talk to the public. Are there members of the public that want to join? There probably are.
But to talk about what we're talking about now.
Yes, to talk about a business program? I don't know. Shipper Design is on, Heidi is on, someone named Selfmade and DT. Does anyone want to talk about this? I would have to unmute you. DT is unmuted.
Monica Worracha.
Monica, if she wants to have a listen. Heidi, if you want to talk on this?
Hi, I'm here.
There's a delay?
Okay.
Hello?
Hello, who are you? Say your name, please.
Yeah, I've got like a lag on this. The merchants are been getting their information out.
So Heidi, do you see people applying for this loan, for these grants?
Do you see people applying for this loan?
It's the phone?
Yeah.
She's listening by phone.
Well, that hasn't been, for the small business loans, yes.
So I know that the bakery in Margos, and at least those two, and-
Oh, good.
And Beres.
Okay, okay.
So Ed, does anybody else want to say anything?
Ed, burrito.
Thank you, Heidi.
The phone, the phone is, makes it, I think, a challenge.
Is there anybody else that wants to comment?
Is this Jeremy?
Yes.
Oh, perfect, perfect. Yeah, this is Selfmade. I don't know how to change it, but this is Richard Gonzalez.
Great.
You guys are doing a great job. The SBA, very important. I agree with Wendy. They just need to jump on and start applying. There's a lot of other factors that go into it, most definitely. Maybe just get on there and just start applying because that's very, very important. You start applying for that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is Monica, yes. This is Monica Worracha. My question, or my comment is, if you're going to make this, if you're going to agree on this, how are you going to let businesses know, all the little businesses that are now shut down and at home? How are you going to get the word out?
Well.
We've been relying on the San Juan Committee. They keeps a constant contact list of all of their members. And as far as I know, they've done a great job of helping us stay in touch with the business owners.
Anyone else?
This is Beth with Shipper Design, can you hear me?
Yes.
I have two comments, I just wanted to, to respond to what you just said. The communication that the San Juan Committee has been sending has been really good, it's quite frequent, and I'm definitely getting that communication, so it's very helpful, thank you. I did have a question, Wendy might be able to answer this, is for the EIDL grant, and then, of course, there's the SBA loan, are those, can those be applied for in conjunction with one another, or do they need to be one or the other?
That's unclear to me at this time, and my recommendation is that you apply for both, and then also, if you have employees, please acknowledge the Paycheck Protection Program. If you, which provides for two and a half months of your average payroll, to be utilized towards not only payroll, but also towards mortgage, rent, utilities, insurance. At the end of an eight-week period, you'll be required to demonstrate that you're utilizing those, and also demonstrate the retention of your employees. You're also allowed to bring back employees that had to be laid off, that's allowable. So, it's not just where you are currently in your staffing. Bringing back employees will put you in a position of demonstrating that you are in adherence with the, the grant program.
Thank you.
I can speak to that also, or maybe Heidi. Heidi, do you have, want to add to that?
I, yeah, I'm sorry, I had my computer on whatever.
Oh, good, you fixed it.
That, all I know, too, to have the $10,000 grant through the business, small business, you do have to have your employees in place still, and not on unemployment.
Okay, but you could bring them back if they're not on unemployment, or take them off.
Yes, that's the whole point of the $10,000.
Right, right.
So, I mean, and I do know, of the businesses, they do need some handholding downtown about getting these things, you know, through, and I've already asked for guidelines of what is needed for each application, and I have reached out, I haven't, and wasn't able to get it today to Dawn, and we've gone through some other businesses that will probably need some handholding to get through this information out to them, and get some applications to get the loans or, and/or grants.
And what I said if I, if you don't mind, so with the Paycheck Protection Program, you have to go through a lending institution, and they have a list of those institutions that will do that handholding for the local businesses.
Cal Coastal in Salinas, the Salinas office, right?
Yeah, and that's who I've been, that's who I've been communicating with to get, to get the information out, and have actual contact people for our historic downtown businesses.
The, sorry, Caesar, was that you?
No, it was, I had something quick to add, to answer with Shipper Design's question. The one example I heard on the way back to work this afternoon was Margos, as soon as she was done completing her loan application, it launched her right into the grant application. It was seamless, she went right from one into the next.
That's correct, that's what she told me today, too.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, I would encourage all your local businesses to jump in online and do the EIDL grant application as soon as possible. It's a limited funds, for a million businesses, countrywide, and first-come, first-served. Do that first, and then move into your Paycheck Protection Program, if it applies to you.
Great, great.
Thank you, Wendy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, Wendy, that's perfect.
Okay, so...
Can we send out a memo to everyone, to all the businesses in town, make sure they get the approval, like, right away?
They've been getting the information from the city. They've either been getting from the Community Bulletin, I've been passing on, actually, the city has a Facebook presence, and the website, and the business, Community Business Association has been sending out on numerous pages as well, and I've been doing direct emails. Also, the information is coming from the county as well.
Right. Are they aware, they have...
Pardon me, I didn't hear you.
And so, are they aware that there's a time limit to submit an application?
We can remind them, Sesat.
Yeah, we're assuming. We'll have to remind them, Sesat.
All right.
I mean, they're getting a lot of information, very, a lot, in a very short period of time, so there has been kind of, assuming there's a rush to get stuff done, yes, because they need, they need the funds, too, so they are working as fast as they can. Everything, everybody's overwhelmed, and they're doing the best they can.
Yeah. Thanks for helping out on that, Heidi.
Thanks, Heidi.
This is Wendy. I would encourage you all, if you move forward with this current action item, that you might put in there as a parameter, the demonstration of having to apply for these funds, and then subsequently unable to acquire them.
I, that's what I requested from the small business loans, and for Cal Coastal, they have all that information, I just haven't heard back yet, and it's only been today.
So, Wendy, good job.
Thank you.
And Heidi, thank you so much.
Heidi, you did good work.
Okay, so, are there any more comments? If not, then we're, we're gonna go ahead, and I need a, a motion.
So, I'd like to make a motion to table this until our next meeting, and if we have an emergency meeting next week, we can bring it forward then, to see, or whenever our next meeting is, to see where we go, and, and who has applied for these SBA loans. So, I make a motion to table until our next meeting.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. So, all those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, one no. So, we all, we all agree except one no. That's John.
Did Dan vote?
Dan, did you vote?
Yeah, I'm voting yes, too.
Okay, all right.
Continue it.
Thank you.
Continue the item, okay.
Okay. So, okay, now, we need a, a motion to approve the affidavit of posting, the agenda.
Go move.
Okay, Sesat, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
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 And opposed, motion carries. All right.
I didn't, I didn't add comments to this special meeting agenda.
You don't need to.
Yeah, I think we've, yeah. Okay, so, in order to adjourn, do I need a, a motion, or can I just adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you, Sesat.
Thanks, Sesat.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you all for coming.
Thank you for being there.
You're welcome.
And I finally got my, my camera working, so now you can see me.
Now we can see you, and hear you.
Looking like a movie star, okay.
Okay, so, meeting adjourned.
We did it, hooray, okay.
Yay, get rid of everybody.
Thank you.
I'm gonna get rid of everybody now.
Thank you.
Bye, guys, have a good evening.
Thank you, public. Public for coming, appreciate it.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, see you guys later.
Okay, oh, shoot.
Goodbye.
Goodbye, thanks, John.
I wanted to tell everybody to, it's all right, I'll, I'll do it through Rich and Nicole. Homeness, De Antonio, Pauline, they're running out of food.
They're running out of food?
And so, they're asking, they're asking for large containers, number 10 cans of food, like peaches, beans, puddings, they need vegetables, tomato sauce, they need potatoes, they need spaghetti, excuse me.
Oh, I forgot to turn my cell phone.
There you go.
We can get back to Heidi and Fran to throw one on.
See, we haven't recorded now. We're having a two-minute thing on.
Okay.
All right, Mike, so on?
We're out, right?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyway, so they need a lot of stuff, they need salt and pepper, macaroni and cheese, onions, white and yellow onions, French bread.